Order, please rise and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Welcome to the House of Representatives, the United States of America, to the Republic from which stands our nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please start at long silence. And remember to silence your cell phones if you have them with you. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. First by Raddick, second by Nelson. There is no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through five constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the December seventeenth meeting. I know the first page of that was excluded from the backup. A little glitch there, but it was updated on the website. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from Human Resources includes A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions, B, authorization to initiate the hiring process, C, approval of request to deauthorize county positions, D, approval of a maintenance technician position in building services, E, presentation of award certificate to Dawn Norton, who will be getting four hours of paid time off for up, she's up to twenty-two gallons of donating blood. That is noteworthy. So you're right there. And F, approval to overlap two employees and one budgeted position in the sheriff's office previously discussed. Item five from Secondary Roads includes A, consideration of resolution authorizing the county engineer to close roads for maintenance and emergencies during 2025, and B, consideration of resolution authorizing the county engineer to execute certification of completion of work on federal aid, state aid, and foreign-to-mark construction during 2025. Any questions on the consent agenda? I'll second the motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item six from Secondary Roads, county engineer or receivers, includes A for action, consideration of award of bid for project number Perrin 152, and approved resolution to direct county engineer to sign contract and bond.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, yes, this was for FM CO ninety-seven Perrin 152. This is a HMA resurfacing cold-in-place recycle project on D thirty-eight from K sixty-four east ten point three miles to Iowa thirty-one. We received two bids on this. This is through a DOT letting. The two bidding companies were Hennington Construction, Inc., and Knife River. Hennington had a bid of three million seven hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and seven dollars and sixty cents, and Knife River had a bid of three million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand ten dollars and sixteen cents. So, um, asking for the board to motion for the, to award the lowest bidder and approve the resolution directing the county engineer to sign the contracts.
So Hennington was a little bid there. Where were they from?
Oh. I don't know. Doesn't say, I don't think, in our documents.
I'll go ahead and move, move to approve to Hennington.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Any other questions? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is consideration of resolution for the K sixty-four snowmobile trail.
And we do have members here from the snowmobile group, if you would like to hear from them.
Yeah, that'd be great. Introduce yourself and...
My name is Mike Hanson from Kingsley, Iowa, um, representing the Powder Players out of Lamar's, Iowa.
I'm Dan Young, Kingsley, Iowa, same thing.
So what we're proposing is to run from D twelve along one forty up into Mowville. Currently, we are in the Lamar's Marcus Remsen Germantown, Kingsley, and we would like to get back to Mowville. The Powder Players have been an active club for about thirty to forty years. They used to be in Mowville, however, with times they kind of transitioned out of Mowville, and we'd like to get it back into Mowville. We're not from Mowville, but we do realize that there is kids and stuff and people that ride automobile. So we'd like to get that back into Mowville. So we are proposing going along one forty, uh, running west along K sixty-four, uh, through some fields, and then come up along the four-way stop there in Mowville, and then, uh, back to Kingsley, so, um, any questions?
So I guess when you say you're going through some fields, every farmer's given permission on these routes?
Yep, yep. The farmers have given permission, um, as well, you know, in everybody, you know, they ask, okay, who, who's liable for something if someone were to get hurt? The, the club does carry insurance, so they would be covering any issues, you know, if there were to be one, so, but, uh, the trails would all be marked and, and suffice to ride on, I guess, safety.
Sure, and that's, I think, a big priority, you know, with, you know, a lot of people riding the dark. I mean, it's dark at five.
Yep, yep.
So you don't want anybody hitting anything that's out there, and a specified trail makes sense, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I was curious when you said how many years you've been going, because I remember the trails up Cherokee County have been there my whole life, so you said thirty-four years, and so that, that fits, so.
Yeah, and I, I talked to a gentleman this morning, because we were asking that as well, and it's like, how long has this been, you've been on? And he thought thirty to forty years. A lot of them guys that started it have since passed and, and, uh, but yeah, it is in Plymouth, Cherokee, O'Brien, and Prozine, Woodbury, so.
I'll go ahead and move the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Raddick, second by Bittenger. Any other questions? Anything we need to add from the engineer's office? Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you, guys.
All those in favor say... Yeah?
Oh, did you have some?
No, I did not have any.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item seven from Conservation is an action item, approval of funds for the emergency replacement of the septic system at the Little Sioux Park Rangers residence. Emergencies and septic systems.
It's a, something you need, so, Dan, high soul Conservation. As you can see through the information I sent you, we had a septic system go down at the Little Sioux Park Ranger's house, and it was thirty-five plus years old. Fiberglass septic tanks and the gray water and the wastewater actually separated, that tells you how old it was. Nonfixable, so, um, we had to replace. Of course, I do not have the funds for that. As you can see, it was eighteen thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars. Lot of sand, it costs a little bit more because of the overexcavation they needed to do to get down, um, putting in tanks and pipes. So I'm asking for help.
So, uh, personally, I'm not a big fan of using, uh, you know, so much gaming all in one department necessarily, and I get it's an emergency, but, uh, something like nine thousand, then you come up with your maintenance funds or, uh, for the rest of it, it's kind of what I was thinking, but I'm one supervisor, so.
I've been hit, um, I asked you for the boiler last month, last meeting, and when I got back to my office, I opened the bill, and I had another five thousand involved in that that I'm not asking for, that I'm gonna eat, because it was all the testing and finding where the leak was and patching it to make it get through to where we're at right now. So that'd have been another five thousand I'm not gonna ask you for. That's gonna go into my maintenance fund. I don't have the money, and we get to the end of the year, I'd have to beg for an amendment, so, um...
Our maintenance and CIP in your budget, where, I mean, where is that all allocated?
My CIP, um, we're paying for a one point one million dollar road that we put in, that you wanted us to pay for, so I've got yearly payments for that, that I'm, I'm saving for that, and then some of the other repairs and maintenance that we do comes out of CIP and any projects. Right now, I'm saving up for that payment that's due in June to the supervisors.
Dan, is there any grants from the DNR or assistance from the state, anything like that you can apply for, anything outside the state or?
No.
For this, or?
No, and it's like the well, we had to plug a well down there at the same time the contractor was there, and we can get, uh, funding for that, we've applied for that to help plug that, so.
Uh, Mr. Raddick, the nine thousand figure, was that just half? Is that your rationale?
Yes.
I, I don't know if that's... You know, for, for an amount like eighteen thousand, that, that's doable, but if we're gonna talk about half for larger emergencies, it's, might not be apples to apples. Do you have some?
I was just gonna say, in my experience working with Dan and Conservation, it seems that they run that budget razor-thin, and it's unfortunate that we've had two emergency breaks, but it's just part of life, and I, I, it's nothing that you can necessarily plan for, and, you know, I, I think that they've done a very good job of pinching every penny and getting as much to go as they, as they can, and so, uh, while it hurts on our end, I just, I'm fine funding it. It's emergency, it broke, it has to be fixed, and that's where I'm at. Is there anything else that might come up as a surprise, maintenance-wise?
I'm hoping twenty-four leaves tonight, and I step into tomorrow, and life is good, so.
So there's nothing?
Nothing I know of. They say it comes in threes, I just keep waiting for that a foot to drop, but, uh, I shouldn't be.
Probably wouldn't be a surprise, right?
Right.
Wouldn't be a surprise, yeah. But, like I said, we, we keep things maintained, we, we have good maintenance program, so we knew that this septic system, I talked to Rick Schneider, the director before me, I had lunch with him last week, and he said they're having issues with that, that they kept band fixing that I did not know about, uh, when he was here. So, like Mark talks about, we try and get the life out of something, and we did. We probably got ten, fifteen years out of this we shouldn't have, so, being the way, the type of system it was and the way it was put in, so, uh, I disrespectfully request the eighteen thousand three hundred and forty-two. I understand your thinking, Keith, and I respect that, but, um, I'll do what you guys say.
Well, it is just a slight frustration, I mean, we could have used ARP, had we known to, you know, and that was...
I asked Michelle right away, I said, when you were giving out that last bit of ARP, I'm like, I looked over at Mark, county engineer, and we're like, we got a place for it, but it was already gone, so.
So thirty, so you've got, the backup says you got thirty-five years out of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's roughly less than five hundred dollars a year. If it's eighteen divided by thirty-five years, it's under five hundred dollars a year cost, it's pretty good for a septic system. I'd be okay, I'd be okay funding it, and I agree, I agree with Supervisor Raddick, yeah, I'd like to find other ways or split it, but it is an emergency, and that's vital, have that up, so I'd agree with Supervisor Nelson, I'd fund it, you know.
And I don't mind trying those approaches if we know it's coming. If I knew that that thing was breaking down, I could have been doing some creative accounting or doing some different things, but when it just hit you and you're over a weekend, and you got a employee and family that have no sewer, it's, it's got, something you gotta act on right away, so.
I move approval of the funds for the emergency replacement of the septic system from Gaming.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. I'd agree with, I'd agree with that. The only, you know, area the state wants us to budget for emergencies is in emergency management, and retain those funds, so we can plan for upgrades or maintenance, but emergencies is just something that taxpayers wouldn't appreciate us building up a slush fund.
Yes, Mike, if he's got funds.
It's not what I meant, but...
I know, I'm just kidding.
It's a zero-sum game here. All right, any other questions? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Item eight from Board of Supervisors, Mr. Bittenger, for action is approval of Sky Ranch Behavioral Services to submit application through iow grants dot gov, listing Woodbury County as the lead applicant, and SRBS is the local nonprofit service provider. Mr. Bittenger.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, yeah. Last year, we had, um, Sky Ranch Behavioral Services ask for us to be a pass-through and on, and have us be the lead applicant on a grant, and so anyhow, Anna's here today to explain that, and once again, they're just requesting us to be, uh, the lead applicant on a grant for, through Iowa Grants, so, Anna, why don't you explain real quick what it is and?
Sure. Anna Bertrand, Director at Sky Ranch Behavioral Services, thank you for having me back today, and thank you again for the awarding of the opioid funds, um, just a quick update on that, we've had planning meetings with Juvenile Drug Court and Woodbury County Family Treatment Court, and we've updated our budget to reflect the award amount from the county. We will be posting job opportunities next week, so we're excited about that, thank you again. We are asking Woodbury County to be the lead applicant, flow-through unit of government for Sky Ranch as the non-profit service delivery provider for a pre-charge diversion school-based program. This is through iow grants dot gov, and it's due January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. The funding opportunity would be awarded mid-February, and it would run April first, twenty twenty-five to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we would offer five thousand to Woodbury County for administrative services as the lead applicant pass-through agency. This would be a culturally specific enhancement to our current shield program that operates in all Sioux City Community School District's middle and high school buildings. It's an alternative to juvenile court processing for pre-diversion charges that are simple misdemeanors, so, um, we focus on substance use and behavioral charges, so that would be disorderly conducts, vaping, first-time THC marijuana usage, and tobacco usage. So we have found that the referrals that we've received since we've launched this program in August of twenty twenty-four, this school year, that the referrals far exceed our capacity, and so we're looking to enhance, um, and provide specific programming for African-American and Native American population in this school district. So Sky Ranch takes care of the whole application and submission process, we're already set, set up through iow grants dot gov with Woodbury County as lead applicant, because we've done this before in the spring of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so just a couple of questions. This costs the county nothing, and in fact, it actually, you would be paying the county for five thousand dollars, if I'm understanding correctly, and then those, as a district employee, just out of curiosity, so let's say we have a young person who engages in vaping in the bathroom?
Yep.
That might sound like a surprise, that does happen?
A lot.
So, do you actually come into the school, or is that?
Yeah.
Young person referred to go get services there?
No, so we're already integrated in every middle and high school building in Sioux City, so our specialists are at, um, West, East, and North Middle and High School every day, so they are there on scene, and so if there is something that happens, like somebody's vaping in the bathroom, and somebody engages with them through administration, um, they get a referral right away to our specialists, and they engage through assessment processes, and they get the diversion process started right away.
And so for this grant, which I'm completely supportive of, this is just informationally, out of curiosity, is this targeting those specific subgroups to an even more enhanced degree?
Yes.
Than has already had services so far? Is that a fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so they'll be focus groups, um, so it'll be for those offenses as well, but I'll also offer up, um, supportive groups and culturally enhanced environment and community for them to be feeling a part of, whether they're involved in juvenile court or not, so it'll be an enhancement to those populations as well. Yep, it'll be an additional two positions.
Thank you very much, and for what you do.
I'll move to approval.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Nelson. Any other questions? Okay, best of luck.
Thank you.
Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you, happy new year.
Happy new year.
Happy new year. Item nine from the Board of Supervisors, uh, it says myself, but it's really from all of us for information, this is presentation of resolution thanking and commending Mark Nara for his years of service to Woodbury County as our county engineer. I'm gonna start off by reading the resolution that I have right here to give you. This is resolution thanking and commending Mark Nara for his service to Woodbury County. Whereas Mark Nara has capably served Woodbury County as an employee of the Secondary Roads Department for fifteen years, from January first, two thousand nine, to February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, Valentine's Day. Whereas the service given by Mark Nara as a Woodbury County employee has been characterized by his dedication to the best interests of the citizens of Woodbury County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County, Iowa, that the undersigned members of this board thanks and commends Mark Nara for his years of service to Woodbury County, and be it further resolved that it is the wish of all those signing below, that the future hold only the very best for this very deserving person, Mark Nara. Be it so resolved this tenth day of December, twenty twenty-four, when it was signed by all of us. I want to ask you to come up, and before I give this to you, this nice framed resolution here, um, I think we should all just say a nice word about you. Because I think we got plenty to say. I guess I'll start. Mark, you've been, uh, one of the most, uh, stable and committed employees I've worked with. Coming on the board, we get complaints about our department heads, uh, and that was no exception with you, but every time I gave you a, a complaint or a task, or I said, I'm not sure about this, you got to the bottom of it, uh, really quickly. You, you truly do serve the Board of Supervisors and, um, give your best effort, and that's critical, because for most of the time, eight or nine years I worked with you, we didn't have a bunch of Mark Nelsons on the board who knew, who knew gravel, knew the rural issues, and we relied on you, and, um, it really, it really worked out for Woodbury County, you brought a lot of experience from other counties, and, um, we think the way that you, um, brought up your retirement to the board, to me, means a lot, because you realize the continuity is so important, and so that's why we have your replacement smiling at you right now, instead of something sudden happening and you just going off into the sunset, so, thank you for being committed to Woodbury County and, um, for all of your time spent on issues that you also have to update the board and explain how the whole thing works before you ask us to make decisions, so, that's what I have to say. I thought we could all go down, and maybe if you want to ask a really complicated gravel or dump truck question, he can answer that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, I, I don't know if I can follow that, that was really good. I'm just appreciative that we could always call you, um, and sometimes I remember I see Mark Monson over there telling me very early on, you know, you'll get these farmers out there and they'll say, no, you should grade it this way, no, you should do it that way. I'm a city kid, so having you on the phone for the one thousand two hundred and forty-nine miles of road, eight hundred and thirty-some, you know, being able of gravel, being able to work with you, and your due diligence on every issue, um, being able to call legislators and, and advocate for us and talk about the repercussions of what they're doing and how it's gonna affect us, uh, you've been a remarkable employee and somebody that, um, has been through all of our tenures on the board, and so appreciate all that you've done, and I'm sure will continue to do, because I've heard different supervisors say, we're still gonna call him, uh, so be prepared for that and to block some of their numbers, but thanks for all that you've done, and really appreciate you, Mark.
Thank you.
I thought it was fitting, you know, Saint Valentine's Day, maybe we should send a letter to the Vatican and maybe apply for sainthood. I did notice that there were quite a few miracles performed as county engineer. One of the fondest memories I have, I think, this is, uh, probably not a fond memory, but, you know, going to or out in the county meetings, and we had one where just, I felt like twenty-eight different people got up and just went after Mark on the gravel, and he just very calmly answered, polite, you know, very, very even keel with everybody in the room, and I, I was always so impressed by that, because I was kind of feeling it for you, you know, I, I just, I just thought, boy, this guy is really good at his job, you know, and, uh, you've always, you know, any information, it seemed like he even just memorized everything you've ever done, so, uh, I've always been impressed by that, Mark, and, uh, you'll be missed for Woodbury County here, and, um, it's one of those tougher ones to sign, because, you know, we feel like you've done so much for the taxpayers of Woodbury County, and you ask so little in return.
Thank you, Keith.
I'll piggyback off of Keith, since we first met, and I was probably at one of those meetings standing up and yelling, or at least a member of my family or neighbor or whatever, and so it's been great to work with you now on this side, Mark, and, um, when you look back at your legacy, I think for a lot of people out in the rural area, they're gonna, you're gonna be remembered as progress, you know, for the, when you came in, the roads were in horrible way, the bridges were in horrible way, and for the longest time, people didn't think we were making progress, and you talk to people now, and they would say that we're on the right path, and that the ship has been righted, and for you, it's been part of this greater plan, right? Nothing happens overnight, but you've always had a plan to keep ball, moving the ball downfield, and you've executed that, and so I'm very appreciative of that, I'm very appreciative that you gave us a notice of when you were wanting to retire, and I know you've moved that date quite a bit to help us, you know, as we were waiting to find the right person, and we did find the right person, but that was, I don't think people understand how critical that was to Woodbury County, that you were willing to stay on and help train that new person and get them up to speed, we're a very large county, there's a lot going on, and it would have been a disaster to have you walk out and hire a fresh face off the street, so I'm very, very thankful for that, and all the taxpayers should be extremely thankful for that, um, and I appreciate here in the last year, you've come, become more political, and looking out for the taxpayers of Woodbury County, and I don't know what your retirement holds, if you're gonna stick around here or not, but, um, I know that you'll continue to fight for taxpayers wherever you end up, and, and always look out for every dollar, and I've always appreciated that, too, so thank you for your service.
Just two quick things. Mark, my first ISAC meeting, um, in two thousand twenty-three, I was, I came out of one of the sessions and talked to some other county engineers, just trying to meet people, and they said, oh, you're from Woodbury County, I was like, yes, sir, and they're like, boy, you are gonna miss Mark Nara one day when he leaves, and I was like, heard the legend of Mark Nara at the ISAC, uh, meetings, and I would say, two years later, I realized, man, they were right, you know, you're wealth information, and then, secondly, um, your attention to detail, um, you know, your emails, or I, I love reading those emails, yes, they were long, and there was a lot of email, a lot of information packed in those, but, um, one of the five dysfunctions of a team is intention to details, but, but that is not you, you are so detailed, and I just have really appreciated, uh, for the board, your backups, your information, even ahead of an agenda item or just something that's gonna come in a couple of months, you'd give us that prep work to read through, or, you know, articles to read, and then, so I really appreciate your attention to detail, I think that, um, has distinguished you as someone that is an expert in your field, and so, thank you for that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I just want to echo something off of that real quick, that, you know, the board is used to gotcha moments at board meetings, but the public doesn't see how much detail you did provide us on issues before they came to a head, and that, you know, quiet attention to detail has allowed us to focus on, you know, those gotcha moments and allow you to run your department with a huge budget and make sure that we know that things are in good hands, so, yeah, that, that attention to detail under the radar is very underrated, appreciate it. Mark, uh, is there anything you'd like to, like to say?
Well, I want to thank this board and prior board members, I've seen one of the gentlemen that hired me in, in the room yet, so, um, I've appreciated the opportunity to work for Woodbury County, uh, doing a job that, uh, I think you all know I loved a great deal, and, uh, I think you have found a, a good replacement here who will continue to carry the road system forward and continue to make, uh, good improvements, so, I'm very appreciative of, uh, my sixteen years here, and, uh, thank you all for the opportunity.
Would you like to come up here, Mark? We'll stand around you and have a nice backdrop for anyone who wants to take some pictures, or chairs out of the way, maybe?
Keith, you can smile better than that, come on. There you go. There you go.
All right, anyone want to say anything else on that item, or? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to item ten, this is reports on committee meetings.
I just have one just for ship. Just that you're going through their audit right now. Everything looks pretty good. And then also, just a good, good news, was they were able to open up another Beyond the Bell site at West Middle. So that was good news. Just be able to provide after-school childcare. So, but that's all that I have.
All right. Moving on to item 11. Any citizen concerns?
I just have one item, and Keith's kind of tripped that. And I'd like to have the board consider putting together a group of you, or the new auditor, the new budget director, and let's look at our CIP process and our improvement project. We turn those forms in and never hear anything. I found out about my boiler I'd put in for three years had never been looked at. And then I had to come to you and ask for the money. So I found out the process was maybe the budget director and the Board of Supervisors chairman, and maybe Kenny got together and looked at those and decided what was going to move on for funding. I would like to see the department heads included in that because I think if I would have explained to you what was going on with that boiler three years ago, I wouldn't have been here last week asking for the money in an emergency. Same thing with the road. We paid for three roads for over a million dollars inside the parks and have done it with CIP funds on our own. I have a request that's been in there for the past 10 years for Little Sioux Park, which is a big project that we can't do. I would like to talk to you because we could phase that. You don't know that when you see that and read that. You get them all. I'm just saying, I would like to see that process overhauled and have the department heads included that turn those requests in so we can explain what's going on and get feedback from you and understand that, why it's not getting put on the list. And to find out later when the problem happens that, oh, it's not on the list, so we can't fund it. So that's all I got. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Kevin Nelson, Mayor of Salix, 406 Willow Street, Salix Strange District related again. So three weeks ago today, you all voted unanimously to create the Salix Strange District. And I'm here to follow up. As you recall, you have two options, either manage it yourselves, or give it away either to Board Trustees or the San Jose City Council. Neither of those things have happened, to my knowledge, based off my watching the YouTube videos and looking at the agendas. So my concern is that it's going to not be a priority because you guys have bigger things to do. I get that. And it's going to get fallen by the wayside. And today is the day to make New Year's resolutions. And how I equate it to is if we spent $50,000 on weights and treadmills and stuff like that, and received it, and then put it in a corner and never used it, then what was the point? And the same with the Salix Strange District. You guys spent $50,000. The city of Salix also spent $10,000 to create this thing. And now here it is, and it's been created for three weeks, and nothing has happened. So that's what I'm asking is to put it on the agenda for next week, to do the resolution on according to 468.322. And I can read it to you if you want, or you guys can Google it, where you can give it to the city council, say this, because they make it more than 25%. Make it way more than 25%. So that's why I'm here, is to ask that, what if you put it on the resolution? Because according to 468.323, I also have here, once the resolution is passed, it can be no less than 30, but no more than 90 days from the time it's passed by the Board of Supervisors to when you can turn it over to the San Jose City Council. If you choose to do the Board of Trustees route, that takes even longer and even more money because then an election has to be held at all the expenses that goes with doing an election. So either way, the city council all spoke to me, San Jose City Council members all spoke to me after it was created, and they all reaffirmed that they would like to have control of it. They've been consistent from day one, since this was brought before you from the very beginning, that they want control of this thing. They're the ones that paid for the petition, thousands of dollars to the engineer. They're the ones that paid for the bond for two years because it dragged on so long. All those costs were only absorbed by the city of Salix, not the Oak Combs, or Burkhardt, or myself personally. So the city of Salix is in the hole, thousands of dollars to run this thing, and nothing has been done since it's been created. And it's causing a lot of heartburn. Because they put a lot of effort into getting this thing this far, and now nothing has been done. So that's why they want to control it, so that things get done, and they can monitor it, and it's right in their backyard. So that's why I'm here, to ask that you do that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
My only question is, is it just a simple resolution? There's no hearing that needs to be had that you know of?
It's just a, just a resolution they have to approve, 468 dot 322. And you want me to read it? I can, but.
And then it takes effect no less than, or no fewer than 30 days, and no more than 90 after? Is that?
Correct. 468 dot 323. And I'm quoting here, "The resolution affecting the transfer shall state at time not less than 30, no more than 90 days after adoption of the resolution when a transfer or control shall take effect."
Okay.
"The resolution shall be certified to the governing body of the city, and a copy thereof filed by the county auditor shall spread the same upon the records of the Strange District." All right. Likewise. Happy New Year. I'll see y'all in 2025.
Thank you.
I was just going to bring to the boards and the public's attention that a longtime employee of the sheriff's office, Sergeant Doug Betker, he's 97, 13. He's been with the sheriff's office for 37 years, and he was in law enforcement prior to coming to Woodbury County. Today's going to be his last working day, his last shift. Today at 3:00, he'll do his final 10:42, which is going out of service. He's got some vacation time, and he'll be on the books for a little longer. But for any of the citizens out in Woodbury County, many of the rural folks know who Doug Betker is because he's on the ambulance crew in Lawton, and has been around. So today's his last day. So if you are watching and you see him, tell him hello. Or if you see him in the store or wherever over the next several months, maybe thank him for his 37 years of service. But today, today will be Sergeant Betker's last day. And just thank him and his family for all of their sacrifices that they've made over the last 37 years. So just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Welcome. Any other citizen concerns? Seeing none. Item 12 is board concerns. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Keith and I are kind of in a spot where we thought last meeting was our last one. It was our swan song. And Keith was going to carry a fishbowl from the Jerry Maguire speech on his way out. But here we are again. So in kind of closing out, we won't make another big speech. But we just wanted to say, one of the things, and I know Dave knows this with military retirements, you get to hear all the good things while you're still living. And that's kind of a neat thing today, to be able to honor Mark, to be able to hear about another outstanding employee that's retiring from the sheriff's office. We, Keith and I talked before this meeting, we want to acknowledge a couple of other people on our way out, if that's okay. So most people don't know, we don't have a very large staff that supports this board. We really have three, had three people. That was Dennis Butler, Karen James, and Heather Satterwhite-Venroch. And we just want to say thank you. I know we're going to thank Dennis here shortly and honor his life and memory. But Keith and I wanted to say thank you to you, Karen, and to you, Heather. I don't think people know all that you do. And the three of you, Karen and Heather and Dennis, really run the office and the show behind the scenes and do all the legwork. You're fabulous employees. We're going to miss working with you, working for you sometimes, you working together with us. And so we really appreciate you. So Keith and I wanted to give these to both of you and just say thank you on behalf of us and the board. So thank you very much.
And they're still going to be here next year. So I don't think they have a acceptance speech planned. I'm not seeing that. So thank you, Mr. Taylor. That was nice. Anything else? Any other board concerns from you?
They do.
Mr. Nelson, Mr. Bedinger?
I'd just like to thank Keith and Jeremy for their time serving the public in a lot of different ways. But it's, I've learned a lot from both of you. We're going to lose a lot. You guys have so much experience. And that joke you made to Mark Nara about blocking numbers, I thought that was funny. But I hope you both don't block mine, because I'm sure I'll have plenty of questions and ask for guidance and insight. And just a little bit of history, I've served on a lot of boards, and you always appreciated having those members that had been on a long time because they could really guide you and help you through the tough times and provide insight of, hey, well, this is what worked for us a long time ago. Maybe we can make it work again. So, but I appreciate your service, and I've enjoyed working with you both. So, thank you.
Right, yeah. I echo that. But yeah, thank you for your guys' friendship. And I know personally, we've had different disagreements, you know, privately, different things over budget and procedures of things. But I appreciate your long-term service. And I echo what Mark said, but you guys have served our taxpayers very well to keep budgets in line and think about our taxpayers. I think that definitely defined you two. But thank you for your service and serving the public.
Yeah, I'd echo that. The only constant is change, and we'll move forward as a board. And it's not an easy job, no matter what side of an issue you're on. So we all have some sort of respect for that, no matter where we, where we stand. Little housekeeping here. Next board meeting agenda, tentative agenda, I've seen it. It'll be a simple, short one for the two new incoming members and the three of us carrying on. January 2nd is the legally required first organizational meeting of the year. That meeting will be at 2:00 PM. It will be a short meeting. Aside from electing the chair and vice chair for the year, we have to approve the bylaws after every general election that govern the board, and also the rules for public participation. Other than that, we just have a, the same annual appointment of citizens to different committees that are required. That's all that I know is on the agenda. So just so everyone's aware, that's going to be a short and sweet meeting. The one after that will be quickly scheduled for our regular Tuesday, the 7th at 4:30 meeting. And I don't have any involvement in that agenda, but it will be most likely budget-related and short as well, if we have not much time to get, get that published. Also, the timing of this meeting worked out in regards to the 10:30 dedication upstairs. So that was a best guess, not having seen the draft of the agenda. When I was communicating with the family of Dennis Butler, when would this dedication be? I said, you can maybe 10:30, but we're going to say after the board meeting. So it all works out very nicely. We'll have a few minutes, and then let's all convene. It looks like there's enough people to use the more central part of the rotunda. So I'd say around the stairs, we'll gather. We'll show off the plaque before it's hung up. And then afterwards, after we have some remarks from people that worked with Dennis, then we will allow anyone to go mill about the room itself that is going to be the Dennis D. Butler Meeting Room. And Heather graciously has laid out some mementos of Dennis from the office and provided refreshments. And so nice time to just chat and remind yourself of what, you know, I walked through there earlier and saw the calculator and brought back memories. Was missing the 10-foot-long roll of paper. I don't know what that was for, but it was always replaced. Anyway, I'm getting into my comments. So that'll take place shortly. I don't think I have any other board concerns. Is anyone else? Thank you. You're adjourned.